August Board of Education, please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening on this exciting solar eclipse day. I hope you all get a chance to just at least get out and see a little glimpse of it. Rob, please call the roll today.
Emily Ebel.
Here.
Cyndra Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Ryan Miller.
Here.
Glenn Newcomer.
Here.
Thank you.
You all have in your pack at the minutes from the July meeting. If you have had a chance to review them, are there any questions or corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. Second?
The second.
Cyndra, please call the roll.
Cyndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes. I don't see anyone here from BEA. Is there any other request for public participation? Sure everybody's getting ready to go back to school. And on that note, Cyndra, under four county career center report.
Yes, classes started last week on the fifteenth and sixteenth, so they are in session. And pretty quiet to start off here. I'll report as the year goes on about our students and things that are coming up. But I do want to say the year end report card is now available online on four counties website. If there's an interest in anybody looking up and seeing what each of the instructors had to say and how their year went. So the year end report is available.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rossworm, your reports, please.
Okay, we'll start with the financial reports for the month ended July 31st, 2017. Our cash reconciliation report, our investments at Farmers Emergent State Bank, $5,299,975. Outstanding checks and adjustments, $277,610. Investments at Star Ohio, $3,264,710. At Morgan Stanley, $9,261,342. And at State Bank, $6,157,289. Petty cash funds, $4,500. Total funds at the end of July, $23,710,207. Of those funds, our general fund balance was $12,720,1. Our permanent improvement fund balance is $2,019,018. Our LFI building fund, our locally funded initiatives, was $600,060. Our construction project local share, our fund was, balance was $4,778,481. And the state share of our construction funds, $20,069,829. To make some of our major balances. Once again, total funds on hand, $23,710,207. Any questions regarding those reports? We ask for your authorization to create change funds for this coming school year at the various buildings. $2,000 for the high school athletic department, $200 for junior high athletics, $250 for high school concessions, $200 for our cafeteria fund, $50 for the principal's office, grade six to 12, $200 for the pre-K to five office petty cash funds for high school athletics, $4,000. And for the treasures office, $500. We ask for your authorization to transfer the amount of $3,722.74 from the Lincoln Principal Fund to the Elementary Principal Fund. And the balance of $7,086.34 from the Washington Principal Fund to the Elementary Principal Fund. What we're doing here is consolidating principal funds due to the reconstruction of our building patterns. So we'll end up with just two or three principal funds when all said and done here. Like to acknowledge some donations, $500 from the athletic boosters to the high school athletic department for golf team supplies and $500 from Mr. Tom Herman to the high school athletic department for the golf team. Ask your approval for a resolution to revise the OASBO Section 457 plan. This will keep us in compliance with IRS regulations. There was a change to the plan to add Roth IRAs. So we had to update our plan accordingly. Permanent appropriations. Per the exhibit in your folder, this year's permanent appropriations are $26,241,337. Last year's permanent appropriations were just over $25 million. Ask your authorization to establish a new fund for photography department, Fund 300-982A. We ask your authorization to advance $75,000 from the general fund to the food service fund. Provide us enough starting capital to get the school year started. We acknowledge tuition rates established by the Ohio Department of Education for the 2017-18 school year. In-state tuition, $5,953.35 per student. Out-of-state tuition, $9,692.20 per student. Any questions regarding those requests?
I don't have any questions. I do have a question. Are there any changes for any of the students or parents as they start back to school and how they pay for workbooks or how they pay for lunch fees or anything? Any changes there?
We are changing the RevTrack system to include not only lunch fees, but also they can pay their school fees online, they can pay their participation fees online.
For extracurriculars.
For extracurriculars, their computer insurance fee. In the past, for the RevTrack system, the school district has paid the 3.5% service charge, charged to us by RevTrack. We're no longer going to do that. We're going to ask the parents, if they use the system, they will be charged that fee directly.
And they only get the 3.5% service charge if they pay online?
If they pay online.
They can still come to the office?
They can still pay cash, write a check, bring their money in.
Okay, thank you.
It's just a convenience for the parents, but it was costing the food service fund around $9,000 a year to have that service and we decided to, that we can no longer afford that.
Makes sense. And the system is up and running for all of those applications right now?
I believe so, aren't they Chad?
For food service it is. I'm not sure it is for school fees yet. I'm not sure the parent portal is on yet. I'm not sure they flipped that switch.
But definitely we've got about a month before school starts, so we'll be ready to go by then.
You guys may know, they're gonna turn the parent portal on probably in the next week or so.
Okay.
How many dollars are we running through RevTrack on an annual basis, do you know?
It was around $230-some thousand dollars last year. There was more parents paying using RevTrack than there were cash and checks coming in. So it is a great convenience for our parents to be able to get online and place that money in their students' lunch accounts.
If they have any questions about that, they can certainly call your office about the mechanics of how that works.
Right, they can contact either the principals, Chad Bassett, or myself. Any of us will be glad to answer their questions.
Great. Sorry, didn't mean to catch off guard, but I just thought as schools getting ready, we need to know that. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions regarding Rob's reports? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve his recommendations.
I move to approve the treasurer's recommendations for the month.
Thank you. Second, please.
So moved.
Tom, please call the roll.
Tom Lingby.
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cyndra?
Yes.
Thank you.
And hold business. I don't know who wants to handle the construction update, Tom, Glenn, or Diana or Rob?
Oh, I said I was gonna defer to Tom, so I'll let them start. I'll let Tom and Glenn start and then I'll fill in any blanks.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Glenn. You ready?
I know you frequent the building more than I do, but I did have the opportunity to go through it last week and it really is neat to see it coming together. When I was there, they were finished painting in the gymnasium. They were laying the wood laminate down up in the upstairs gymnasium. Lot of boxes moved into classrooms, lot of staff on hand administratively getting things around. Landscaping, grooming going on around the outside of the building. There's no doubt, there's quite a bit of work that still needs to be finished up yet, but it's progressing very well. And it's really fantastic to just walk through the building and see what the final product is gonna look like. So I'll let you jump in, Tom, and you go from there.
I took a walk through this morning and hardwood floors down in the auxiliary gym, absence about against a foot up against the one wall, they were short a little material, which is gonna be here, I think, Wednesday. They had sanded a lot of it, so they expect that to be finished, I think, late this week or at the latest first part of next week. Carpet was in the music rooms that used to be locker rooms. They were short, I guess, or didn't have enough of the original run, so they had to make another run to come up with another carpet, enough carpet. And they now have that down. Really, all the rooms were being cleaned up. You know, the east end of the building, the first and the second floor, those have been done for some time. A lot of the rooms, as I sort of peeked in a couple of them, some of the teachers have been in early and have them in order, ready to go for school. Looks good. In terms of construction, it truly is down to, you know, just the final details. They say the kitchen's ready, other than the final cleaning. The east end of the building, like I said, has been cleaned and I think pretty much done. They indicated that the ceiling tile guys were coming in and they were gonna start at one end of the building and go through the entire building, replacing any tile that needed to be replaced one last time. It's pretty much squeezed down to that corridor that was between the gymnasium and the locker rooms on the first floor and then the maintenance and mechanical rooms along the south side of the building, which is really what they're using for staging for their material and their work boxes and such. And based on Felix's summary that he ran over with me this morning, it sounds like they're pretty much pushing everybody out the door later this week. And they put the tile down on the floor and it'll be done. I mean, it is really close, really close, and it looks great.
Good news, good news.
So the only thing, I have a few things that I would add. First of all, just a reminder that on Sunday, September 10th, we're going to host a dedication at the pre-K to five building that'll start at 2:00 and the community is invited to attend. And we'll open up the building following that dedication ceremony for people to just to walk through as an open house and tour the building. We have had a few requests to also tour the six to 12, so we may take a look at seeing if we can have that building open as well during the same time. We are working as well towards give some updates on some other items. Washington, we've had a lot of questions regarding Washington Elementary. The abatement will finish up this week and they'll start tearing down that building either late this week or early next week and they expect that process to go very quickly. So once again, we will do our best to make sure we save some of the exterior brick and have those available in a designated location so that if people want to pick those up, we will have those ready.
And they all announce that on Facebook?
Yeah.
Website and things like that?
We'll put the announcement on as soon as we know where and when they're available. And then with our Portland campus, we have the abatement coming up. We'll start in October. And that process will last through most of the winter. That'll be a little bit more extensive process. And then the demolition will start in February. Is that correct? The latest that we've heard? So those are updates there.
Remind me of the sale date at the high school?
The auction for Portland furniture and fixtures is September 21st. And that is a Thursday and that starts around noon. So again, we're starting to advertise and Halleck Realty will be doing that auction and they're starting to advertise as well. And then finally, just over at the six to 12, because there's been some questions come through. To dispel any rumors, the entire gym floor was not replaced, again, was not replaced. We did have some repair work that happened over the summer that was all covered under the warranty. They're also doing some work on the courtyard. Some of the stain on the concrete did not, it's just not there. And so they're using an alternate material. They're coming back in. And again, this is at no cost to us. They're coming back in to reapply a different type of stain for the courtyard. And then we're still working on our cafeteria tile floor and the grout. We had some issues with the grout that we had to wait until summer to address and they're still working on that this week. And again, all of those items are covered under our warranty and still working with the construction company to make sure that we have a building that we all can be proud of. And then finally, I would say we do have temporary occupancy. We're not officially open for business in the pre-K to five, but we have had staff members allowed in to start getting things unpacked and set up. And overwhelmingly, just the gratitude and the comment of it feels like Christmas morning. There's just a lot of excitement in the air and we're just really excited to be able to share this new building very soon. So other questions?
Thank you. I would just say, because it's a temporary occupancy permit, we're not open for business for parents to come in and pay.
We are not open for business, no.
So that's gonna be, do you have a roundabout date or, again, that'll be on Facebook and website?
I think Felix indicated they thought it would be like late this week would be permanent occupancy.
I don't think we get our permanent occupancy. The last I heard was the 28th. He expected to have it.
That's next week.
That'd be Monday. It was the end of this week, first of the week.
Inspection on Monday.
Certainly not this week.
But we don't know yet, so putting a date out there. You don't want people showing up on Monday saying, hey, I heard you were ready.
Yeah, unknown.
Here's the word, unknown.
But we'll announce it when we do know.
Yes, we certainly will.
Okay. Any other questions about the construction? You covered my checklist about the kitchen and cafeteria floor repairs. Oh, ceiling, how are we doing on the roof at the K-12 or 612? Okay?
Had no roof.
We haven't had any.
No problems there that I'm aware of.
That's what I'd like to hear. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Transportation.
Okay.
Some changes.
So I do have some graphics for you. I'm gonna pass these out and I've already shared these with our media coverage so that they have them to look at as well. Thought this was a little easier than trying to hook up the screen that may or may not be visible. So we're gonna go through, you guys can share a couple back here. We're gonna go through, you still have your copy, right?
I do.
Oh, you gave it back to me? Well, we're gonna have to share, Mr. Beck. You can come up here. So, starting with the first sheet, and Mr. Beck is here, I'm gonna go through kind of the introduction and then we'll answer questions that the board has. We have been working all summer very diligently trying to ensure that we had a full fleet of drivers. And we have been up and down on the roller coaster and late last week, we found that we just have not yet been able to recruit the number of drivers we need. So we needed to take a look at options that we had available for us. And we are now, we have announced via direct mailing to those impacted by change to parents and families. We sent that mailing out last week and now we wanna share it with the board and with the media. And Josh is gonna help us get the story out this week and we're gonna put things out on social media as well. So this first graphic shows our state mandated transportation, no transportation zone. So we are state mandated to certainly transport certain students. We have to follow the law. But the law gives us up to a two-mile radius where we can declare no transportation available. This radius is actually about 1.6, 1.7 from the school. And we made a box. So Town Line is the west, High Street is the north, Main Street is the east, and south is Fountain Grove Drive. So if you live within that zone, we will not have transportation available. We will, that includes, we've had to eliminate the Y shuttle and we've talked to the Y as well. That includes what used to be our Portland campus, Washington campus, Bus Barn. So this is the first area of impact with this change. Now, what does not change, if you go to the next side or the next graphic, last year when we moved the schools out to the Fountain Grove campus, we established city bus stops that kids could come to and we would pick them up and transport them here to the campus. Those routes, those stops will remain and they'll remain the same. And there are signs with colored signs where the stop is located and those have not changed. And so this graphic shows the approximate location of those stops. And remember, the idea is we're getting kids to walk north and south to the stop so that they can be picked up on the correct side of the road with the safety in concern. And then finally, on the third page, this is in cooperation with the work of Mr. Ari and Mrs. Cox and Mr. Beck and a lot of pre-planning. We've also shared this with the Bryan City Police Department and the Fire Department, making sure for traffic flow, how we need parents to do drop-off. So parents coming in to the pre-K to five are gonna enter near the football field from both the north-south or east-west end and travel all along past the concession stand to the sidewalk and then they're gonna be able to drop off anywhere along the sidewalk, including in the front of the school where the buses used to be a couple of years ago. So that blue arrow represents anywhere in that zone, parents can stop their car and have the students exit and there will be multiple entry points for students to go into.
So again, to come to this pre-K to five buildings, parents will only be allowed to come in from Town Line Road?
Correct, correct. So, once they drop their child off, they can then exit towards Center Street or towards Fountain Grove, just depending on which they have the need or preference to do so. But that is the only entry point for pre-K to five. Six to 12 parents, much like last year, can come in off of Fountain Grove Drive or they can come in off of Center Street and come behind the school. There is only one drop-off zone for six to 12 and that is in front of the school. And again, that blue arrow represents a very long sidewalk that parents can drop off at any location and there are multiple entry points.
They don't have to drive right up to the front door?
They don't have to drive right up to the front door and then they can exit back out to Center or Fountain Grove. All bus traffic, all students who ride the buses, the buses will park between the two buildings. We have aides and adults that'll help. We're going to move the buses so that it is safer for our pre-K to five students to be loading and unloading. We're gonna switch the direction from what they were last year. It'll still be safe for our six to 12 students and then those students will walk into the two entryways. And then buses will exit, some via Center Street, some via Fountain Grove Drive. Now, we understand that this might be overwhelming and it also might be a little frustrating because of the changes. And so it's our commitment to continue to recruit drivers. We actually had a possible candidate today that stopped in. We will be screening, training, recruiting, and if we are able to build up our fleet of drivers, we are committed to re-establishing and re-evaluating these changes.
And that would probably be a mid-year correction, like at the break?
Yes, we wanna make sure, Mr. Beck and I have talked, we wanna make sure we don't implement it and then have to take it away again. So we wanna make sure we feel really confident that we can get through the end of the year.
So if you hired a bus driver and didn't have to reinstate a route, what would that bus driver be doing then?
Right now, I have one driver that is doing extra. They're working in the classroom as well as a partial route right now to make sure that what we have scheduled minus these routes that are becoming a walk area, she's actually going to be doing extra hours for us to get through. So we're still tight. To get what we have right now, we're still tight, very tight.
So for our benefit, how many routes did we have before? How many routes are we down to now? Or how many drivers are we short?
We're two drivers short is what we had to eliminate. And then do you have the route numbers?
We didn't have to eliminate, we eliminated drivers?
No.
We eliminated find drivers.
We eliminated routes.
Routes.
Not drivers.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna clarify that, 'cause you said eliminated drivers.
Yeah, we've actually brought in two more this year than what we had. One of the things that we've come across is SERVES went through and did a change in their retirement as of August 1st. So that took an effect on us. And then nationally, bus drivers, there's a shortage.
Sure.
In Ohio.
It's not an easy duty.
It's not. For the last three years, I've heard down in Columbus that people are hurting or school districts are hurting for drivers. I hear many times that there's a school, other schools around the area that put a big banner of help wanted on a school bus and park it up in their yard. I don't wanna go there, but it's one of those, we advertise, we're constantly looking. As far as to answer your question, with the number of routes, it's somewhat misleading. If I gave you the numbers, because it would almost seem identical. What we were able to do last year and the previous years is we would drop in the morning at one school and be able to pick up kids that walked to that school and bring them to another. So it's a little bit misleading if I say that we have 21 now, but we had 21 last year as well. So when we would go into schools in the morning, we'd start at both ends, six to 12 as well as the Portland campus. We would drop those kids off and then some of the people in this area here would get on the bus and we'd be able to take them to another location. So kind of like a hot seat or a little bit where kids would get off and others would get on type of thing.
That's always kind of like.
It's misleading if I gave you the exact numbers because they would almost seem identical with bus routes.
How many kids are we impacting with this exclusion zone?
There are, I did, and this is just some rough numbers from about a month ago. For a two-mile radius from the parking lot in between the two buildings, there's somewhere around 900 kids total, okay, in a two-mile radius. In that one to two mile, you're at 750. So anytime we figured, and even last year when we did those numbers of trying to guess or do an educated guess, we have always seen between 40 and 45% of students would actually ride a bus that were eligible. So the direct impact, we were looking about 300 total that would normally ride.
So 300 kids that would normally ride a bus now can't be bussed?
That would be a guesstimate. Right in that one to two mile radius, there's about 750. Now, not all of those are within this that block there, because I did a radius and we have to look at street path.
Well, we sent letters out to families, 'cause I know I got one, 'cause I live in this exclusion zone. How many letters did we send out?
I don't have that number.
I don't either.
I can get that for you.
I would like to know that number. I'd like to know how many students we're impacting with this decision and I would like to know.
I have a question. When we do the city routes like here?
Yes.
Are students assigned buses? I know that you try and pick them based on their residence, but there's babysitters and other grandmas picking them up. What's going on with that?
For, we have a primary and alternate location. We do a primary, which would be your home or the student's home, and then we'll also do an alternate location to help in the event that there's a first shift with the parent and they can't, they want their child to be with the grandparent or a sitter. So we will accommodate those to the best of our ability. We look at two things. Number one is the bus going past that location. We're not going to reroute because we're around, we're close, I think it's $6 a mile is what it costs us in the ballpark. We have to have room on that bus as well.
That's why I was just gonna ask, are all these routes pretty full when they're pretty packed? So a student, for example, in the exclusion zone, could he walk across the street and get onto a bus that's not assigned to him?
We have a few that have already established an alternate site, other than in this area as we're preparing today. Yes, we're allowing that as long as there's room.
On case-by-case basis and they have to get the exception from your office?
Yes. There is an area just north of this location here that is added this year because it's outside of that 1.7 street path. That one, I know parents would love to go there, but right now, I don't know the numbers well enough to say, yes, you can because the bus may be pretty full. And we're basing it off that 40, 45%. Here in a couple weeks, or a couple weeks of school, I'll be able to determine if we can allow that or not. I'm hoping so, but we just don't know.
Are we competitive in the marketplace for what we pay our bus drivers?
I think in some areas we are. I don't have all the numbers. I don't know if Rob or Diana does.
Well, I guess from my perspective, it is asking quite a commitment for a person to commit just to three and a half hours with no additional benefits. And for what we pay without the benefit package, if that's what it takes to attract more qualified drivers, we may need to review that because rural school districts, that's one of the ways that they do attract and granted, they have a little bit more of a time. ways that they do attract, and granted, they have a little bit more of a time commitment than maybe our bus drivers do. However, the transportation and the safety of our students is paramount, and I'll be straight out and say that I'm very disappointed that this issue has not been addressed and that we're even discussing it here tonight.
The benefits, or...
That we're short on drivers and the need to reroute.
This is going to be a struggle.
I know, but I'm disappointed that.
Well, we've talked about having split routes, which we had in the past, and we didn't need as many drivers. Well, we went to the one-route system that required more drivers, and that's part of the problem. Educationally, it's best if they can all start on time, on the same time.
Right.
And so, this was a challenge, and when we committed to everybody start at the same time, this bus situation's been a problem since then. Fair assessment?
Yes. And it has been something that we've tried, Diana and I have spoken many times, you know, how can we bring more people in? If I knew the answer, it would be solved this and right. Every school district is looking at that. Do we try and bring in really good drivers? Absolutely we do. Then it seems like we're always recruiting. We've been hurting, I'd say for about two years, where we've been discussing some things. And one of the added things that we did this year, hoping to help with some of that fear, because driving a bus is scary, especially when you put 50 to 60 kids in there. Driving a bus is easy, but when you throw the kids in, it makes it more difficult. It's something that you have to want to do. One of the things that we were able to do this year is throw some aides on the bus to also help with the kids.
Is there an aide on every bus in the city route?
No, no.
So you've got a driver who's trying to also manage 50 kids, right?
But we were able to add aide coverage to multiple routes.
Yeah, I think it was an additional tent in the morning and afternoon, so there's very few that do not have it now. And it's one to help with the driver. I think I came, we came last year and towards the end of the year and said, can we do this? Maybe it will help. So are we doing things, yes? Is it enough? No, right now, we're hurting.
We also did look at the benefits, and we also went to our custodial staff, our aide staff, our food service staff, and tried to do some internal recruitment in offering them to combine positions and to be, and afforded those benefits, like you mentioned. And because from a bus driver perspective, yes, that would be very helpful. From a board's perspective, certainly if you wanted to give us that directive, we can bring that back to the table, but that's, it's a very, we're trying to be cost efficient, so at least if we can have one person doing two needs in the district, whether it be food service, educational aide, or custodial. But we did have some people that were interested, and we were able to get a couple. But again, it's somewhat fear, it's somewhat the training, the amount of training and certification.
Can we offer to, you have to have a CDL license and all those things.
We already pay for that.
Have we paid for those things already?
Pay for the training, pay for the license, pay for the physical.
Mm-hmm, yes.
There is an initial cost where they pay for the permit, and then we reimburse that once they finish. But other than that, we cover the cost, we do the training.
About how long does that training take, Joe?
Minimum, there's a 16-hour class that you have to do through a regional trainer, which is Joe Dietrich out of the Allen County ESE.
And how often are they offered?
Those are, I'd have to look at the schedule, but no, it's actually about every week. There's one going with a skip. It could be in Lima, Finley, Tiffin, there's one in Archibald, but there is a rotation there. And then from there, you have to have a minimum of 12 hours of training with an onboard instructor, which I am the onboard here, where we go through, talk about parallel parking, which, yes, we do have to parallel park a bus for the test. It doesn't normally happen.
Never do in real life, ever.
Cars, yeah, we don't do it. So there's a ton of training there, and then we do road training, we do the pre-trip, where you have to be able to recognize just about every component on the bus, and then I do the test there, or here, for the drivers, and then we send them to Perrysburg, a third party, to do their state test. So, it's a little bit to get.
Sure. And I respect that, I mean, that's part of why I ask questions, I respect that, there is a lot to get, and I understand that, and I'm just wondering if there's a way, a path for us to make it easier, and I asked the question about, I want to make sure everyone's aware that we will compensate or reimburse for costs to get that, and that's not something borne by somebody, and, you know, what other opportunities can we provide to somebody? I mean, think about those too. And I, I mean, transportation in general, you know, the labor force, how many companies do you go by that have "Help Wanted" signs outside? Businesses that want our people, and I respect that. It's a, if I had the answer to that, you said we'd be millionaires, but I, it is frustrating to me to know that we have plus or minus 300 kids that are being impacted. We're a district of about 2,000, over 2,000 students, so, you know, if you figure somewhere between 10 and 15% of our kids are impacted by this, it's not an easy pill to swallow. I mean, it's a reality, I understand that, but it's frustrating. Same token, so I empathize with where Glenn's coming from.
Well, I just relate it mainly back to safety of the students, and that this is asking more of our community to adjust to our schedule now that we have a campus here. And with all of the confusion that's going to be part of the beginning of the school year with the transportation routes and everything, it is asking a lot, and there will be a lot of questions asked. And as, hopefully before, you know, the winter gets bad, everyone will understand the procedure. However, you know, in the wintertime, when it's sub-zero outside and the snow's blowing, it is asking a lot for people to adjust their schedules to accommodate our schedule.
And I can empathize, I mean, you see this, right? The furthest, about the furthest corner you get to is where my child's walking, that's about where my child's walking every day from high school to there. And so I am, I can empathize with any parent who's frustrated, upset, I'm a parent too, and I get that.
It may seem to some like this is a last minute, right before school. It was one of those that, I've been speaking with Mrs. Savage all summer.
She's kept me surprised.
We've been working very hard to try and get people. I thought we were going to be okay, then it got to a point where I had three people back out for different reasons.
And three people makes a difference in how this works?
Yes.
Three drivers.
I was ecstatic, and I think I spoke to her soon after I heard this third person was interested. I was ecstatic, because it's going to work. How it was going to work, I had no idea why it was working. But then, when they backed out, it was one of those, we need to do something.
Did they give you any reasons? I mean, was it to do with the job or separate issues?
It was separate, it was separate. There was a little bit of hesitation. One was coming from a full-time position where they were doing motor coach driving, and then they...
A different crew in the back?
Different crew, definitely. Then there was another one that had an opportunity to drive for their own district, instead of driving 20 to 25 minutes here.
And then drive, yeah.
It makes sense. So it's multiple reasons. But it was one of those where we know it's getting close to the school year, but we want to make sure that there's enough time to let parents try and figure out how to get their child here. But it was one of those, I didn't want to make the call.
I realize that through the years, we have had to adjust our salary or compensation schedules, whether it was a substitute teachers in order to attract and address that issue at one time. There are other special positions in the school district that we have to, you know, be competitive in the marketplace, and that's the only point that I'm trying to ask as well, is are we competitive in the marketplace with what other districts are offering their drivers?
Actually, on the September board agenda, we've talked with Rob, we are not competitive in the sub-bus driver market.
In the regular route?
In, with a regular route, we feel we're competitive, kind of in the middle, but with sub-drivers, we are not. And so in September, we will be bringing to the board a proposal to adjust, make that adjustment for sub-bus drivers. Again, hoping that if we can get some subs in, get them feeling more comfortable, that they would be interested in taking that on full-time.
Joey, have you had an indication from anybody that inquired about the position? Whether just more pay would solve the problem, would bring them in?
I have not heard on the more pay. Of course, if you offer anyone more pay, they're never going to turn that down. So I have not heard pay.
To get them, an inducement to come, you know, if the number was higher than where we're at right now.
I've heard benefits, Tom.
Benefits.
Benefits is a big deal, that's $15,000, $16,000 per driver per year.
Well, it is.
I've heard that.
I do have one that was looking to come here. They had been looking to come for the last several years. However, it never worked on their schedule, it didn't happen on our schedule, it was a timing thing. And then there was a potential for that one to come in. The person currently has insurance, but they were looking at possibly through their retirement, losing some, so they looked at the cost from here as well as other districts, and they chose to stay where they were at.
Is there still any option at this late date to get a driver who would drive part-time and fill another position, either custodial, food service, or have all those other positions been filled, so it's not necessarily an option right now?
It's not an option right now, because those have been filled, and actually, we have two aide positions that we will need to reduce prior to the start of the year because of students not coming.
So that's not really an option at this moment?
No.
And we have been able, I think there's been a couple of our drivers that have been able to acquire jobs during the middle of the day, between around, so that's definitely beneficial, because chances are, I would have lost them as well. So, there's good and bad.
I'm sure that we continue discussion about this issue. Thank you for the information. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions on the...
Oh, okay. Off a bus, onto traffic patterns.
On the traffic pattern at the new...
Page three.
On the campus here. I have a question. On the south side, which would be the Portland streets, or the Portland, Fountain Grove side of the six to 12 building, it says, "No left turn into staff visitor lot during student drop-off and pickup times," which is different than what that's been in the past. In the past, I know people have turned into that lot, is that right, or is it turning left coming out of that lot that you're intending that?
As for during the AM drop-off and pickup times in the PM, if you're coming off Fountain Grove Drive to eliminate that left turn in there to drop off a student, because in the end, you would end up going against the flow of traffic for the drop-offs. So we want to encourage all parents coming in off Fountain Grove Drive, or from the Center Street direction for that matter, up to that...
Follow the general traffic.
The second drive, the one that creates the one-way direction all the way around so you can drop curbside.
So here's my general question for that, and I get that as, again, a parent who drops his kid off there in the mornings anyway. Is there a reason we don't do that, just make that one, that traffic pattern one-way all the time?
Well, what we have run into is because that is the staff and visitor parking lot, and actually, some students do park there as well if they're a traveling student, is it would create another approximately, there's 130 to 140 spots in that lot, that would then be forced to go through that one-way loop and around into that parking lot.
But we're making it so they can't go in that way anyway during our busiest times of the day, so why not do it all the time? If I'm reading or understanding this right?
Well, for our staff, they are there before students arrive, so the staff are already in the lots, and then for the very few visitors who are pulling, maybe they have to run into the office quickly to drop something off. That number typically has been traditionally very low, so the number of cars actually turning left in there to go and park in that lot is minimal compared to the number of cars that are coming through to drop off their students. So we have, we did toy around with it. At the beginning of the school year last year, we did have some cones set up to eliminate any left turn from entering there, and once the cones were removed, and we let traffic patterns kind of dictate how they, how things played out, we saw a minimal number of parents turning left into there, and the majority following the one-way drop-off procedure, and didn't run into numerous issues that were brought to our attention.
Okay. Okay.
Diane, I spoke with you earlier, just about there's some traffic coming out of the school, going into Greystone that needs some repainting, there's an air made in the exit.
Yeah, Karen actually brought that to my attention last Friday. We just need to address that with the construction team.
Okay, but, so you, we are not prohibiting people leaving the campus from going into Greystone, so that'll be repainted, however needs to be done?
Yeah, we'll work on that with the construction team.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else? Transportation, parking, busing, traffic patterns, okay? Thank you very much, appreciate your work on that.
Okay, under administrative recommendations, ironically, the first item is transportation and allowing the bus stop locations as established by the transportation supervisor, and also the authorization to relocate those transportation needs for the 17-18 school year, along with payment in lieu of transportation at the rate established by ODE for the 17-18 school year. So once again, I just want to point out that even though we're starting out with this transportation pattern, we're going to continue to evaluate, and if we need to make changes, either in the city bus stops because of a difference in ridership or in our routes, we are committed to doing that. And what you're doing with this authorization is giving us the ability to do that throughout the year. So we'll continue to talk about that as we go through. Also, under administrative recommendations, we have the cooperative agreement with First Brethren Church, which just gives us, this is an annual action, which gives us an emergency location to go to in the event of evacuation. Again, this is something we're going to have to, with being on one campus, reevaluate our situations and work with our safety officials to make sure that we have good, safe, viable locations.
It may not be big enough?
May not be big enough at this point. So, again, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and approve it, because it's an annual action, it gives us a starting point, something we're going to evaluate as we go through the year. Then we have our Wood County Juvenile Detention Education Program Agreement. This is for students who are assigned to that residential placement throughout the school year, and it's a per DIAM rate. And then on your addendum, we have a mental health supervisory services agreement with Montpelier Exempted Village. This is going to assist with our social workers, our care coordinators, and this is a cooperative effort with the seven county schools. And if we're hopeful that the federal funding is going to continue, and if that were to happen, you're going to see that money, that cost refunded back to us from Montpelier. So I am thankful for Montpelier taking the lead on that and being the lead school and handling that employment, and then the seven of the schools working together. It's been a great four years for the grant, and we've seen a lot of positive impact in all of Williams County because of it. So, very excited about that. Any questions regarding those administrative recommendations?
You want one more for that affiliation agree with Brown Mackey?
You know what, where did I, did I miss that one?
Next page, next page.
Next page, thank you. We do have the, thank you very much, the affiliation agreement with Brown Mackey. I apologize, that was right at the top of the list. And then also, you have the classified sub-list and teacher sub-list as we have today for 17-18. Again, we are continuing to look for subs in all areas if anyone is interested. Now, any questions? Thank you, Emily.
Okay, I would entertain a motion if there are no additional questions to approve the superintendent's administrative recommendations.
So moved.
Tom? Second, please. The second. Syndra? Please call the roll.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under resignations, we have Brent Stanhals, pre-K to five administrator, effective July 31st. Erin Hughes, pre-K to five educational aide, effective July 31st. And Chris Kiesacker, educational aide, effective 8/16. And then from your addendum, Beth Klingeman as co-head softball coach. Would like to recommend a one-year limited teaching contract to Mindy Kepler, sixth grade social studies teacher. Mindy comes to us from Eden. Masters level, 10 years experience. Callie Thiel, St. Pat's Auxiliary Service Intervention Teacher, Masters level, 10 years experience, and Callie comes to us from Stryker. Also, under classified personnel, Mike Berlin as AM bus arrival breakfast study hall monitor aide, zero years experience, five hours per day. Would like to recommend a one-year limited teaching contract to Mindy Kepler, sixth grade social studies teacher, Mindy comes to us from Eden, master's level, ten years experience. Callie Thiel, St. Pat's Auxiliary Service Intervention Teacher, master's level, ten years experience, and Callie comes to us from Striker. Also, under classified personnel, Mike Berlin as AM bus arrival breakfast study hall monitor aide, zero years experience, five hours per day, effective the first day of school. Teresa Gambler, six to twelve dish room, five years experience, three point five hours per day, effective nine six. We've recruited Gary Wildman, Beck from Kentucky, bus driver, two years experience, three and a half hours per day, and Alan Grant, zero years experience, three and a half hours per day, effective September 12th. I'm just double-checking my addendums as I go on, so. Transfer of classified personnel, Melissa Lauren to server shipping receiving at the six twelve campus, four point seven, five hours per day, effective nine six. Dawn Spielman to cashier, pre-K five campus, three point five hours per day, effective nine six. Jennifer Andrews to six to twelve classroom library aide, five point five hours per day, effective September 12th. Amy Lauer, pre-K five dish room, three point five hours per day, effective nine six. Teresa Keller to AM duty, one-on-two recess, PM duty aide, seven point two five hours per day, effective September 12th. Change in hours, Sherry Robinson will serve as both a bus driver and a preschool one-on-one aide, for a total of three point five hours, five days a week. Preschool one-on-one aide, four point two five hours, four days a week, effective September 12th. This is going to be one of those changes. Again, we've had some students that are not going to be coming to school, we will take care of those at our next board meeting, those transfers. Bus driver hours per day, effective with the seventeen eighteen school year, this is following Mr. Beck's bidding of the bus routes, and so you see those listed as all of our drivers and the routes that they are driving. And then educational aides, I do have one correction on this list. For Carolyn Stanbaugh, I would like to correct that she is a one-on-two aide, not a one-on-one, as listed on the board agenda. It still stands at seven point five hours per day, it's just a correction in the title. And again, those are after the bidding, and looking at the students that we have that are coming in, and those that are leaving, and with the transition to the new building, making sure that we have the areas covered as needed. Mentor teachers, for the seventeen eighteen school year, we have a need for four mentor teachers for our new, new staff. Salary schedule placements, effective for the beginning of the seventeen eighteen school year, are listed, along with three additions from the addendum, Casey Clemmons, Abby Hughes, and Colleen Smith. So please take a look at that addendum. Supplemental contracts, Craig Boselman is junior high football coach, Matt Cullen is head cross-country coach. Athletic department volunteers for seventeen eighteen, Jacob Will and Chris Spisak?
Spisak.
Spisak, thank you. And again, approval of the district substitutes as listed, and then we do have some other personnel items that we will take separate action on as well.
I move to approve the...
Personnel.
Personnel recommendations.
Got it. Second, please.
Second.
Ryan? Please call the roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
So we do have some separate personnel motions to approve as substitute teacher and newcomer.
Also move. Syndra?
A second.
Thank you, Tom, please call the roll.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Stanh.
Emily?
Yes.
And then next, under personnel, we would like to accept the recommendation of Casey Thormeyer as elementary music teacher and head cross-country coach, effective July 30th, and offer Casey a two-year administrative contract as pre-K to five elementary administrator specializing in grades three to five.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, Ryan? Glenn? Please call the roll.
Tom?
Upstate.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would like the board to know that as of today, with the exception of this music position, which we're interviewing for right now, we are completely full...
Great.
...and ready to go for September.
Good to hear.
Finally...
Except for bus drivers.
Except for bus drivers. Thank you for that clarification. Next, I would like to ask the board approval of this policy. This was supposed to be updated in our upcoming quarterly edition with Neola, but I asked to pull it to do it now, so that we're ready for the school year. Policy fifty-three thirty point oh-two, procurement and use of EPI pens, will allow us, because of the grant we received, allow us to have emergency EPI pens available in the office for the school nurse to utilize if needed, in case of emergency. It establishes the policy, I gave you a copy of the policy, it is from Neola. Again, the only reason we're moving it up is because of the start of school, and I'd like to have those available when students arrive on September 12th.
Any question? Motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Tom, second.
Second.
Thank you, Syndra, please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, you have the upcoming meeting dates, and I'm going to defer my report of superintendent, I'm gonna let Chad present a little bit in just a few minutes on our report card, and I'll help him with that, that'll be the main part of our presentation tonight. But first, we're gonna hear from Eric Ruffer. Yep, please.
We've gotten rolling, actually, football started July 31st, and everybody else started August 1st. Couple programs already competed. Golf's off to a pretty good start, they've had two second places, a fourth and a fifth in their invitationals, and then they've had three dual matches, they've won all of them, so they've had a pretty nice start to the year. Girls tennis, they're playing their eighth match today, they're six and one going into the day, and here, the final. I know they're a little late arriving today, Whitworth from Toledo. They're off to a good start, they won their opening round of their tournament, they have a tournament at the beginning of the season, which is a little bit different, they beat Oak Harbor, and they'll play Lexington, and I think we're still waiting on a date for that, so that'll be around the corner. Cross-country opens up Saturday, August 26th, early bird meet at Defiance. Football and cheer will kick off this Friday, at home against Van Wirt. Boys soccer did open up Saturday, they beat Pauling four nothing, and then they turn around tomorrow and play Waseon to start a league play. Girls soccer, they're at Shawnee tomorrow, that'll be their first game, and I think they have Waseon this Thursday to open up league. And then volleyball, they actually start tomorrow night against Delora at home, so we're off and rolling, kind of been at it, start getting busy again towards the middle of, end of July, and we're rolling before school starts, so that's all I had, unless you have any other questions.
Thank you. And we're gonna save you.
You're saving me?
Uh-huh, we're gonna save you. We'll let Mrs. Cox go next.
Well, I wanna just take the time to thank our custodians. My first day back was the seventh, and we just had boxes and boxes, and I, you know, day in and day out, I've seen them take all the pallets off the trucks and put them in classrooms, they're doing it with a smile, they're not complaining, they're ecstatic to be in the building as well.
So I just wanted to thank them, because they've done an amazing job.
Our tech department has also really stepped up, if you think about everything that has to, everything that relates to tech in a brand-new school, they've been a huge asset to us and the teachers as well. Just wanted to remind everyone, our back-to-school mailing is going out tomorrow, so hopefully parents will get that by the end of the week. In the back-to-school mailing, we have important start dates for preschool, cub, kindergarten, and transportation information. One thing that we've always done for homerooms is we've placed homerooms on the front of our schools, and it actually is a big deal with our families, they can't wait to come up on our doors and see who's in their homeroom, what teacher they have, so that posting will go up August 31st, which, in what you were saying, the portal will get turned on after that, so everyone will find out at the same time. So those will be posted on August 31st at 10 o'clock, kindergarten through fifth grade. Preschool, homerooms will get mailed home. We do have our open house, our pre-K to five, I love saying that, pre-K to five instead of all of our different buildings, will be Thursday, September 7th, from 5:00 to 6:30, so we welcome all of our parents and students to come in at that time. Again, kindergarten orientation is Tuesday, September 12th, and we have specific times listed back in our school mailing. Our school supply list is located on our Bryan City Schools website, so if anyone has any questions over that, they can contact our office, and believe it or not, we have gotten some calls on, "When is picture day for Bryan Elementary?" So picture day for Bryan Elementary is Tuesday, October 17th.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rary?
Good evening, and I'm gonna echo what Mrs. Cox said about the custodial staff, our six to twelve building still has that wow factor, you still walk in and the floors are shiny and it screams, "Brand new," so kudos to them for an amazing job over the summer, and I know that they've had to kind of play double duty with not only maintaining our facility and keeping it fresh and beautiful, but also help out and assist with the large moving project happening at the new elementary. So, coming up quickly, actually, to start the school year, prepare for the school year, I should say, we have our registration day happening next Wednesday, August 30th, so we invite all six to twelve families and students into the building that day, anytime between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, they can pick up their schedules, pick up their Chromebooks, pay fees, turn in forms, find their lockers, find their classrooms, receive their parking permits, deposit lunch account money, it's kind of a one-stop shopping event for all students in grades six through 12. So, with the addition of the credit cards, being able to pay for fees and some other of those fees, we're gonna have portals set up, and stations set up with our tech crew available to help parents and students work through that, so it may be new to some people. So, that same evening, then, we're also doing our orientation for our new incoming sixth graders, so our sixth grade parents and students are welcome to come in that evening at 5:00 and learn about what the middle and high school has to offer them. And then our open house is Wednesday, September 6th, once our teachers are back in, and that's from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. We have a new pathway that we're working on also, as well, as we start off the new school year. We spent the summer and spring months meeting with a variety of different local businesses who are yearning for a network to provide them quality employees. So we are kicking off, really, the start of another pathway, in which we're offering the opportunity for students to, basically, for this year, take the senior internship experience and start to, start that at an earlier grade level as juniors, but we're also gonna work throughout the school year to offer courses and additional opportunities for students that they can participate in, basically workforce development pathway all the way through grades six through 12 or seven through 12. So we're excited to kick that off, we have our first few students starting to enroll in some new internship opportunities with some local businesses, so we're excited to see what's yet to come.
Thank you. Thank you. Chad, with anticipation.
We're trepidous.
What I'm gonna hand out to you is, this is our second year for the AIR assessment, so our 2016 results, as well as our 2017 results, and state averages that go along with that. At the back of this packet is also just some sample test questions that I wanted to throw out there, just so you know what our kids are facing, couldn't put them all in there, so I grabbed just a couple third-grade math test questions.
Still see if we can pass them.
And a couple fourth-grade math questions, if you could figure out the last one, it took me a little bit of time, so I'm also riddle going through it. But if you look at these results, our scores did increase in some areas, quite a few areas, some we did not, we did increase from 2016 to 2017. We look at our state report card, it's gonna look like we didn't increase. It's because last year at this time, when the state was releasing the first round of the AIR assessments, they said, "Time out, everyone's not doing so well in the state," and so they adjusted those scales of, "Did you make the check mark here or not?" This year, as you can see, state averages came up a little bit, but not a whole lot, and they said, "Kind of too bad, we're gonna hold everyone to this eighty percent passage rate for that." So therefore, we're gonna see a dip in our score because of that. Now, the only thing we have to compare ourselves right now against is the state, the state average. I'm not here to say, "Yeah, we should be great, then we're average," I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, I put more credence in, I wanna see how we did against similar districts, districts in northwest Ohio, districts of similar, pretty reduced, similar special ed numbers, and the state will put that out there for us, just don't have it yet. Another major we always kind of look at and see how we're doing is our value-added score, major student growth from one year to the next, not whether they passed or not, but whether they grew or not. State does not release that score yet, I checked about 3:00 this afternoon, it's still, is not out yet, so we're waiting on that as well. Where we'll go from here, I know six to twelve are meeting tomorrow, then I'll be around in the opening meetings as well, we'll dig into the test results, we'll look at the sample questions, the state used to in proficiency tests, released a good number of the questions, so you could actually get those in teachers' hands, you could get them in kids' hands.
Find out which questions that they're missing.
Yeah, get the kids' hands, not so much now. We get very few questions released to us. After this next year, they say they're gonna release more, but up till now, in the two years of AIR, we have very little test questions to look at. For instance, I threw one in there that's, it's a story problem, it's not a traditional story problem, you know, our standards may look like something with multiplication, like a third grader needs to know, two times eight. This kind of reverses the role on kids and says, "Okay, here's two times eight, now you come up with a story problem." And with the correct answer in it. So that's kind of the battle we're fighting, especially in math, it's a reading test in math as well, because we have to write those questions out, and I'm going back to my third-grade mind, and I'm thinking about whether I want to put these footballs in the, or basketballs, or baseballs, or apples in my story problem instead of what they're trying to ask me to do. So we have to teach a lot of like logic, real-world skills, and I think they're important, absolutely. It's gonna take us a little bit to catch up after we do that.
And you'll meet together as staff by grade level, by subject matter, to find out...
Six to twelve will be subject matter.
Okay, only by subject matter to find out, okay, if we're missing in biology or science in that category.
Yes, and then at the elementary level, we'll meet by grade level, kind of department as well, those grade math teachers will meet, since they don't release a lot of the test questions.
But they don't release the test scores, the test questions that are missed?
No. No.
You know what's the first thing you do when you get your test back and you miss them? You find out what you missed, and why you missed it.
What we get is a score on each kid by three categories, so math, it may say, number sense, algebra, geometry, they're low in algebra, and that's all it says, so we don't know exactly.
Algebra's a pretty big field.
Exactly, so they're pretty broad. So what we have to look at is, they have test blueprints that they'll say, "Okay, if there's 10 questions on this test," there's a lot more obviously than that, five of them are gonna come from algebra, and three of them are gonna come from geometry, well then, we probably need to focus a little bit more on algebra this year, because that's gonna be the bulk of the test questions. What those look like, we don't really know. You know, when I, when I taught in the old proficiency test, I took those questions right into class, and we had a question of the day.
Yeah.
Let's figure out how to solve this, right? Really, we could do that, it'd be about five days with content.
Diane, who can we talk to at the state about these kinds of issues, the fact that we can't get good data for our students and our teachers to review, to find out that, you know, this is a question they're missing? If they don't know what they missed, how do they know what to work on for our staff? Is there someone at the state we can talk to, I mean, is that an ODE problem, which they're not gonna take very well, because they're the ones who wrote the questions, right?
Well, AIR does the testing, I think it's a, it's either a legisla, I don't, to be honest, I don't know today who you would talk to, we start with ODE, whether that's legislative-driven on how many test results, or whether that's AIR-driven, I have a feeling...
So ODE hires AIR to facilitate this testing?
Correct.
But who maintains control over the data that's released, and that's the information we don't know?
That's the information I don't know, we would have to look into that.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure on that. When the first year we took this, they kept asking, telling us to go to Florida, because Florida's an AIR assessment state as well, and when you go to Florida's site and look at their test questions, they're a grade band test, so it's gonna say, "Three through five math." Oh, okay, well, it's tough to give a fifth grader, because a lot of them were third grade, some of them were third grade questions.
So what does AIR stand for?
American Institute of Research.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, that's the first question. Okay, thank you. So I asked you...
So it is frustrating, just sorry to interrupt. It is frustrating to us, it's frustrating to our teachers. It's got to be frustrating to our kids taking these assessments as well. All we can do is keep digging into it and keep that trend line moving up, or at least moving up. We're hitting, trying to hit a moving target, but try to hit that.
Yeah. So as Chad said, just to reiterate and reinforce, you know, we're not happy with where we are. But right now, as of today, we don't have all the pieces of the puzzle yet. We don't know our value-added scores. I've seen our teacher OTES evaluation pieces, their student growth measures, and I've seen exceptionally high, above average multiple times. So I know, at least I predict, our value-added scores are going to be very positive, but we don't have them yet. We don't have the scores other than comparing ourselves to the state average, those, like Chad said, those Northwest Ohio districts, those similar districts. You know, are we on an island, or are we all in the same boat? That's, that's a big question that I have that hopefully we'll get the information for over the next few weeks.
It's just frustrating for me to look at things and see that we're getting 43% proficient, 55% proficient, 34% proficient, 56%, 55%, 45% in different categories. I think, I mean, if my kid brought home a grade card with these kinds of grades on it, he'd be grounded for long periods of time.
We don't want, we don't want, we don't know what they're missing. That's the problem.
Well, and that's my frustration with this, is they're just, here's your data.
Good luck.
Here you go.
Get better in math.
There you go.
That's kind of the direction, right?
There's no, there's no education to this.
No, it's, it's, well, teach to the standards. Well, I feel our teachers are teaching to the standards. I really do think they are. I think some of these test questions.
They can be ambiguous.
Be ambiguous. I'm not sure they're, some of them are developmentally appropriate for, it's pretty high-level thinking skills for some of our, a nine-year-old kid.
We have not heard the end of...
What happens if we don't do AIR assessments? Seriously, what happens if we don't? If we say, screw it, we're not doing it, what happens?
Could impact our funding.
Does it?
It could, our grant funding, I know that at least, because we have to show, it's easy to show. We have to show a plan of how we're going to get better on AIR scores, at least for grant funding. I don't know the bigger scheme of that, but.
Can you find that out and let me know? Seriously, if we don't do it, I would just be intrigued to know what the answer to that is.
Yeah, we've talked before, Ryan, about what happens if we don't follow the state mandates that are not funded. And part of the problem is they tie that into licensing of our superintendent and CFO. If they're not meeting the mandates of the state of Ohio, then that puts their licens, licensure on the line, even though, even though the district is, you know.
You know, I can speak, I did talk to one colleague about a year ago from the Cleveland area, and that was when the first park and AIR assessments came out, okay? And just give you a frame of reference. I don't know where, what the law stood on that, but he was really, uphill battle. Someone had sent a letter out to their entire district and said opt out of these tests. So 75 of the kids, some of their kids opted out of the test, and 25% took it. And he was in panic mode, basically of, because of some of that stuff, like, how's this going to affect my license? How's this going to affect theirs? Because the kids chose not to take the test, but.
Do our students with special needs take the same test, and are their scores included in the...
Their scores are in that. All but 1% of our special ed, which are our dubious population, they take an alternate assessment. But by far and large, the majority of our students with disabilities take this assessment.
Thank you.
And that's why, Rob, again, we're waiting to see that value-added score because it's, if it's truly about making sure that every child learns year in and year out, that's going to show up in the value-added score.
Okay, while we beat you up as much as we could, Chad. Thanks. Thanks for your help. And we'll continue to ask for progress and see how it's going. So thank you. We do have a need for executive session for purposes of property for public purposes or sale property, I would say B, other matters to be kept confidential by federal laws, and E. Preparing for, nope, no negotiations. So B and E. Any other questions, any other additions? I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for those purposes.
No, second.
Syndra.
No, second.
Tom, please call the roll.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Syndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
I anticipate taking no action. Thank you very much.